Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Washingtonville Special Board Meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 11th. If everyone could please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I want to thank the Washingtonville Central School District for the use of this auditorium tonight. It is our plan to hold special meetings such as this at a venue just like this. Tonight we will hear from Orange County Transit. Orange County Transit submitted a petition regarding a proposal for a private bus depot 23 South Street in Washingtonville, tax lot 121-11-1. This parcel is property, is 9.1 acres plus minus, is located behind what was Spear Lumber and Hardware. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce the owner of Orange County Transit, John Mensch. I was just going to introduce you. You'll have your chance.
Thank you.
I want to introduce the engineers who presented this to Orange County Transit. Engineer Andrew Featherson from Collier Engineering, along with Sean Brady, also from Collier Engineering. Attorney for Orange County Transit is Anthony Miranda. With us tonight, we have the Village Board Deputy Mayor Vallee Redado, trustees James Kolar, trustee Louisa Sampson, trustee Richard Kolor, and myself, Joseph Bucel. Also joining us tonight is our zoning board attorney, Elizabeth Cassidy from the North Borough of Elizabeth Cassidy. This property is currently zoned RA, residential, single-family dwellings and agriculture. The property is adjacent to properties located in the BG, also known as Business General Zoning District. At this time, the petitioner is requesting that the Village Board consider the following request. Extend the existing BG Business General Zoning District to include the entire 88.5 acres, which is presently zoned residential, single-family dwellings and agriculture. The zoning text amended to clarify and clearly permit private bus depot has permitted use of BG zoning district. Currently, the BG zoning district under section 315 there, 63, special exceptions, uses permitted service station, building station, car washing, station of public garage, and bus or other public transportation, passenger stop station, or turn. During this meeting, the applicant and the Village Board will only be addressing the 9.1 acres. The applicant will be presenting their proposed project. The Village Board will follow up with any questions regarding this project. After the presentation, the Village Board, who is being asked to become the lead agency on this project, will ask the applicant questions regarding the project. If time allows, the public will have the opportunity to speak. Each resident must state their name, spelling out the last name, their address. Comments will be limited to three minutes in order to give others a chance to speak. Index cards will be handed out to those who don't wish to speak and still have some comments. Again, we ask that you include your name and address on index card. All questions will be addressed either tonight or at a further meeting, but will also be posted on our village website. I just want to thank everyone for taking time of their busy schedule, okay, so we could have this conversation tonight.
Just to provide everyone a procedural process moving forward, the applicant or petitioner has presented a zone change petition that involves a local law amendment to amend your zoning code. If that, if that local law were to be adopted, the applicant would then go through planning board approval for both subdivision and site plan approval. This is going to be an extended process. There may be changes to the project, as often projects come in and there's an evolution of the project. So tonight, the purpose is to allow an initial presentation so that, for the board and the public. And so with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Anthony, who is speaking for you guys.
The Village Board is just going to move down to the lower seats so we can see the presentation.
Is it everything in this? That's the entire directory. Doing that.
As long as you click on the picture, we can go in and out. Just make it as big as we possibly can.
My name is Anthony Miranda. I'm a land use attorney with, working with Cuddy and Fader at Fishkill, and I'm working with Orange County Transit on this project and a number of other projects throughout the Hudson Valley. As the mayor indicated earlier, I'm joined tonight by the owner of Orange County Transit, John Mensch, as well as Andrew Featherson from Collier's Engineering, who's the site engineer.
It's on. You've got to go closer to it.
Use your outside voice.
Yeah. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, let's start over. Good evening, my name is Anthony Miranda. I'm a land use attorney with Cuddy and Fader at Fishkill, and I am the land use attorney assisting Orange County Transit with this project, including a couple of other projects throughout the Hudson Valley. With me tonight is John Mensch, the owner of Orange County Transit, as well as Andrew Featherson, the engineer on the project, working on the site several portions of the way. Really quickly, an introduction to Orange County Transit is important. Orange County Transit is a school bus company that contracts with local, local school districts to provide school bus services to the community. They're located throughout Hudson Valley, they hire local drivers and employees, and they work with a number of school districts, such as Wapinder School District, the Walden School District, just to name a few. John, I know as please be your type, as you may know, has been in the community recently and has been hiring local employees. A little background on the project, which I can use this aerial map behind me to help illustrate, this matter involves an 88-acre parcel, which you can see there is located behind Spear Lumber and just west of the solar facility that's back there. The 88-acre property is owned by an underlying property owner that's not Orange County Transit. Orange County Transit is proposing to place a school bus facility behind the Spear Lumber area. It's a 10-acre portion of the 88-acre lot. We'll get back to that in a second, but I want to talk a little bit about the overriding request here, which is why we're before your board of trustees. The request includes a change in zoning to this entire 88-acre parcel, which would include the 10-acre portion that we're talking about. As your attorney indicated earlier, it's not simply that portion of the review process that's before the board of trustees, but this application would be before the planning board. It would also go through a state, a secret process, a State Environmental Quality Review Act process, which evaluates a number of potential impacts and topics that are related to a number of different conditions. Can we cut to the zoning? So this map is helpful because this is your village zoning map. Do you can see me? You'll see there, there's a district, there's a, there's a large parcel there, that's the 88-acre parcel that's identified by RA. The RA district is the, is a district that allows residential uses, except it's identified as a residential district. It allows, for example, single-family residential development on that 88-acre parcel, 88-acre parcel. There's other residential districts, as you can see, both to the east of South Street and to the west of the site. This parcel also adjoins the BG zone, that's, that's the general business zone, which the mayor mentioned earlier. You'll see there's a sliver actually that comes off South Street that's already in the BG zone. As part of the proposal, the first step is considering a zoning change to include that whole 80 acres into the what you see as purple, that would be BG. This would effectively eliminate residential uses on this larger parcel. The question that, that came to us was that Orange County Transit is somewhat of a unique use, and we want to be sure that a school bus facility would be permitted in the zoning. So rather than, there's a number of ways to proceed and do that, but we thought the most open way would be to go to the board of trustees and talk about the project, and see if there's a way to change the zoning that makes sense for the village. That's what's proposed. In the BG zone, the bus facility use would be permitted. It's arguably permitted under the existing BG language, but that's part of the request also to clarify that language. If we can go back to, or yeah, just go back to the area. I'm going to, I'm going to lead in for Andrew to go through the site plan in a moment, but first, if we could just zoom in there. Just to get some context on what we're talking about now for Orange County Transit. The facility will come off South Street by way of an access route, and then wrap around behind Spear. It's a two-phase project, which Andrew will walk you through, but effectively there'll be parking, a single building, and store-mortar-related infrastructure development, parking area, things like that. I'm going to hand this off to Andrew now to walk a little bit more through the details of the site plan, but I just wanted to make sure you had context for the particular area we're talking about for Orange County Transit.
Good evening, Andrew. Good evening, Andrew Featherson, Collier's Engineering and Design. So we were asked to prepare a sketch site plan application, which is essentially the first, the first step of the process. It's a single sheet site planner. Doesn't have a lot of detail yet, we haven't developed that detail yet. What we're looking to do is accompany Anthony and come to the Village Board and see what their, what the temperature is on changing the zoning of this, of this piece of property. That's what it is right now. This determines whether we're going to go forward or not. As far as the detail that I have on the plan right now, driveway is right here, comes off on the south side of the Spear Lumber property, wraps around the back, and I have two plans up there. You can see it's proposed phase one, and then phase two. Phase one would develop a, a maintenance garage, offices, a driver lounge would be in this building. There's four bays to that, to that garage building, and they drive through. You drive in one side, open the door, you open the door on the other side of the building and continue to drive through. It's a safer condition than having somebody back out. There would be 4,000 gallons of gasoline, 4,000 gallons of diesel, and 4,000 gallons of propane stored on the site for the buses. We are talking about running electrical conduits right now for the, for the diesel buses. The diesel buses in the wintertime have a, a block heater, it keeps the engine at a moderate temperature, so the buses have an easier time to start up. I think in a very short time, I think by 2030, 2035 or so, there's going to be electric buses, this is not going to be fuel stored buses. The fueling area that I was talking about is right here. That's not going to be the old subsurface tanks, this is going to be a tank inside of a tank. It's all done on the surface. But when they're, in the future, I could foresee there's no need for that. That could be removed from the site. And the conduits that are used to run the, the block heaters for the diesel buses will be the conduits to charge the buses. So this site is 625 feet set back from Route 208. That's more than two football fields long. The total property that we were talking about was 88.5 acres, the, this phase one is just a little over five acres. Then the second phase would add some additional bus, bus lot storage to this area. I'm very familiar with this site. Twenty years ago, Kay Hovmanian Homes came in and looked at it for senior housing. We did that work. So I've, I've got some familiarity. They're proposing 80 employees would work here, full. There's 10 parking places required by the code, we've got 15 for the, for the facility. When you came in and got your bus, we're warming it up, you'd pull it out of the space and put your car in there, so we're not adding another large area of impervious surface. You basically switch, you put your, take your, put your car where your bus was just stored. The phase, the first phase is for 56 buses, the second phase is for 78. That's the, that's the, what we're looking for, for storage. Water is, water service is located out in Route 208. We would submit a will service letter to the village and see if they could meet the demand, which is really not very great for this use. There is, I understand, a sewer that goes right through the site. We would propose connection to that, again, after going through the village, confirming that that would be acceptable, and seeking a will service letter from the village. The plans at, at this time are not highly detailed, designed. That's forthcoming. That's what we have so far.
So in terms of the process, where we are right now is very early in the process. We filed the request for the board of trustees to consider a zoning petition change. As part of that, what would then start is the, again, the secret review process. As part of that, there'd be a number of public meetings with local board of trustees and the planning board. Eventually, the planning board would have a public hearing or public comments who would receive as part of that record. A number of outside agencies would be consulted, and if the board of trustees say this, be the agency for that review, they would provide comment. So there's a number of steps, would it be opportunity for additional public comment, as well as comment from agencies. At this point, we were seeking for the board to start that process and get into the more formal structure by declaring itself the lead agency and considering the application. That's all we have for you tonight. We're going to sit down and listen, and thank you very much for your time, we appreciate
I think because it's just right in their eyes. Do you guys want to move over?
You want to come up here? John and Anthony and Andrew and Sean, whether welcome to come up here?
John, you want to talk a little bit now? You, your company?
Sure. Good evening. My name is John Mensch. I've been in the school bus transportation business my whole life. My father started the business back in 1969. We originally started the company in Monahan, we were based at Monahan. We moved up to Hudson County, Hudson Valley County, into providing more school bus transportation, and we expanded our platform. We also have a current contract and have contracts with Washingtonville School District. We share transporting the students of the community. We do a lot of the special ed, private parochial, and we do some charter. We also have a contract with Monroe School District. We also provide the same thing for special needs, charter, and home-to-school. So our need is to have a bus yard that's close to those school districts. We approached the town, the village, to see if we could do this. It makes sense for us and for the school districts. School, local school districts would like us to be closer, to service them, but the school district doesn't have a say, they have to go to the village's, to ex-. We, we have a current bus yard in Walden, New York. We're in the Village of Walden. We do the Walke Hill School District, and then we expand into Wapinders, as Anthony said. We have an operation over Wapinders School District. And the same thing as Wapinders, as Monroe, and as in Washingtonville, the school district operates their own bus depot, as you know, across the street, but there's a national shortage of school bus trucks, so they need the help. And then they went out to bid, we bid in a bid process, we were the lowest responsible bidder, and we've provided transportation to the Washingtonville School District in Monroe for the past three years. And we currently just renewed our contract. So we are the community, we started this process with the owner, and to be part of the community, to hire, start hiring local people that live in the community, we had rented the local bank, which was closed, we rented it, and we have an office there in town, on Main Street, at the corner of the lane. So we did not buy that building, we just rented, because we were hoping that we can get this process started and move our office into the new building. Mr. Mayor, if you want, if you have any more questions? The village members, board members have questions?
You mentioned, you mentioned 9.1 acres, and it's over two phases. There's one building located, and you show, is the project all or nothing on this? In other words, phase one, does phase two need to follow that? I'd love if you could give an answer to that. Or are we just looking at one phase right now? Because presently, the school district has 73 school buses over a two-acre parcel of land that's, of course, the street from the, the high school. You have 9.1 acres and 100, 110 buses for?
Seventy-eight plus five.
So 78 plus five and six, 134 buses. So it's almost double the size of what Washingtonville Central School District has. Do we know, does anyone know, or it could be a question for the board of ed at some time, is the school district looking to get out of the bus business? Maybe that has anything to do with tonight's meeting, but I think it's something that we would like to know. So is this project all 9.9 acres of, of buses, or is it just one phase? Can it be just one phase?
So I appreciate the question, and as far as the board of ed work, I don't think we would, we would be respectful not to get into that with the board of ed.
Yes.
We'll also do our best to field these questions, but we're also going to take them down. As you know, we're pretty early in the process, so we may not have answers to some of these questions. So that's not avoiding the answer, that's just we may not have it. We don't want to say anything incorrect that could lead people one way or the other. So.
That's a question. And you know, what I would also ask the public, when you do get, you have a chance to ask the questions, like the attorney said, you might not get the answer tonight, but we will get the answers to you via our website, okay, as quickly as possible. All right? So no, no question is going to be unanswered. I just wonder, how many questions are you going to get with, with one particular subject?
And again, the question and answer, there's a process for that, which we're hoping to start and get into in an organized manner, so we have to do our work with the boards as we go forward to probably get a lot of those answers. So I just don't want to be misunderstanding that next week there'll be a posting of answers to questions that, that may not be the case.
Right.
So, okay. As far as the two phases of the project, under secret, the environmental review statute, you're supposed to review the entire action, and because there's a contemplation for a phase two, we wouldn't want to exclude that and not have that be included in the review process. I think the intention, yes, is for the full nine acres of area, and with respect to comparison to other existing facilities, it's difficult to do that. Each site is unique, you have to have proper circulation, you have to have proper area for the bus to be able to turn, and all those things, so it's not a straight, in my opinion. I'm no engineer. But it's not a straight capitation. John?
So under transportation, under the federal government of New York State, the governor, along with the federal government, has grants. They, the governor proposed by 2035, all buses, school buses, should be, or phased in by electric. So the reason for the extra space is so when the tanks are removed from the above ground, because they're not putting them in the ground, that we would need charging stations. And so for every bus, you need a charging station, just like you have a Tesla or an electric car, you'd need a charging station. And those charging stations are a lot bigger than a whole car, because they have to make the charge for the bus route. So they're, they do make them, they are out there, they are being tested, and the future is we're going to need space to install these charging stations to charge the electrified buses, which is going to be required by New York State.
I have no question. I'm just wondering, is Orange County Transit only looking to purchase the 9.92 acres or the entire 88 acres?
They only 9.1 acres.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, they did buy it, yeah.
Right now, you're coming here to, to the board. Can everybody hear me?
No.
Photography teacher's got that working right away.
Okay, so you're coming here to the board. Are you presently in contract with present owners for the property?
So can I just, I'm just going to clarify.
Okay.
In the, in the petition itself, the, that the applicant has presented, there is an owner's authorization. In the petition itself, there is an owner's. In the petition itself! There is an owner's authorization, and the owner has authorized the petitioner to make the application. On that basis, we are allowed to hear the application, and that's part of, we wouldn't be here but for that authorization.
Okay. And is it just, just to add, we are in contract with the owner with the authorization? Yes.
Pending the zoning.
Obviously, a concern, I taught in this building for many years, and I retired a few years ago, and I used to leave after the buses, in the Washingtonville School District leaving, primarily because it was impossible to get through town. And. That's right. Forty-eight bus routes leaving the high school is a nightmare. And now I'm looking at 56 plus 78.
John, you wanna talk a little bit now? You, your company?
Sure. Good evening. My name is John Meach. I've been in the school bus transportation business my whole life. My father started the business back in 1969. Originally, he started the company in Long Island. We were based out of Long Island. We moved up to Hudson County, Hudson Valley County, into providing more school bus transportation, and we expanded our platform. We also have a current contract and have contracts with Washingtonville School District. We share transporting the students of the community. We do a lot of the special ed, private road view, and we do some charter. We also have a contract with Monroe School District. We also provide the same thing for special needs, charter, and home-to-school. So our need is to have a bus yard that's close to those school districts. We approached the town, the village, to see if we could do this. It makes sense for us and for the school districts. Global school districts would like us to be closer to service them, but the school district doesn't have a say. They have to go to the village to act there. We have a current bus yard in Walden, New York. We're in the Village of Walden. We do the Walk Hill School District, and then we expand into Wapengers, as Andrew said. We have an operation over Wapengers School District. And the same thing as Wapengers, as in Monroe and as in Washingtonville, the school district operates their own bus depot, as you know, across the street, but there's a national shortage of school bus trucks, so they need the help. And then they went out to bid. We bid in a bid process. We were the lowest responsible bidder, and we've provided transportation to the Washingtonville School District and Monroe for the past three years. And we currently just renewed our contract. So we are the community. We started this process with the owner, and to be part of the community, to hire, start hiring local people that live in the community, we had rented the local bank, which was closed. We rented it, and we have an office there in town on Main Street, at the corner of the way. So we did not buy that building. We just rented, because we were hoping that we can get this process started and move our office into the building. Mr. Mayor, if you want, any more questions? The village members, board members have questions?
You mentioned 9.1 acres, and it's over two phases. There's one building located, and you show, is the project all or nothing on this? In other words, phase one, does phase two need to follow that? I'd love you to give an answer to that. Or are we just looking at one phase right now? Because presently, the school district has 73 school buses over a two-acre parcel of land that's, of course, a street from the high school. You have 9.1 acres and 100, 130 buses for?
Seventy-eight plus fifty-six.
So 78 plus fifty-six, 134 buses. So it's almost double the size of what Washingtonville Central School District has. Do we know, does anyone know, or could be a question for the board of ed at some time, is the school district looking to get out of the bus process? It probably not has anything to do with tonight's meeting, but I think it's something that we would like to know. So is this project all 9.9 acres of buses, or is it just one phase? Can it be just one phase?
So I appreciate your question, and as far as the board of ed, we're kind of agreeing. We would respect one not to get into that with the board of ed.
Yes.
We'll also do our best to field these questions, but we're also gonna take them down. As you know, we're pretty early in the process, so we may not have answers to some of these questions. So that's not avoiding the answer, that's just we may not have it. We don't wanna say anything incorrect that could lead people one way or the other.
Okay. Appreciate it. And, you know, what I would also ask the public, when you do get, you have a chance to ask the questions, like the attorney said, you might not get the answer tonight, but we will get the answers to you via our website, okay, as quickly as possible. All right? So no questions going to be unanswered. I just wonder, how many questions are we gonna get with with one particular subject?
Well, and again, the question and answer, there's a process for that, which we're hoping to start and get into in an organized manner, so we have to do our work with the boards as we go forward to probably get a lot of those answers. So I just don't want misunderstanding that next week, there'll be a posting of answers to questions that may not be the case. So, okay. As far as the two phases of the project, under secret, the environmental review statute, you're supposed to review the entire action, and because there's a contemplation for a phase two, we wouldn't want to exclude that and not have that be included in the review process. I think the attention, yes, is for the full nine acres of area, and with respect to comparison to other existing facilities, it's difficult to do that. Each site is unique. You have to have proper circulation, you have to have proper area for the bus to be able to turn, and all those things, so it's not a straight, in my opinion. I'm no engineer. Believe me. But it's not a straight caporation. John?
So, under transportation, under federal government and New York State, the governor, along with the federal government, has grants. They, the governor proposed by 2035, all buses, school buses, should be or phased in by electric. So the reason for the extra space is so when the tanks are moved from the above ground, because they're not putting them in the ground, that we would need charger stations. And so for every bus, you need a charger station, just like you have a Tesla or an electric car, you'd need a charger station. And those charger stations are a lot bigger than a whole car, because they have to make the charge for the bus ride. So they do make them. They are out there. They are being tested, and the future is we're gonna need space to install these charger stations to charge the electrified buses, which is gonna be required by New York State.
I have no question. I'm just wondering, is Orange County Transit only looking to purchase the 9.92 acres or the entire 88 acres?
They only 9.1 acres.
Okay. Thank you.
Wait, they didn't buy it yet.
That was my question. Right now, you're coming here to the board. Can everybody hear me?
No.
It's not.
Photography teacher's got that working right away. Okay, so you're coming here to the board. Are you presently in contract with the present owners for the property?
So can I just, I'm just gonna clarify.
Okay.
In the petition itself, that the applicant has presented, there is an owner's authorization. In the petition itself, there is an owner's. In the petition itself! There is an owner's authorization, and the owner has authorized the petitioner to make the application. On that basis, we are allowed to hear the application, and that's part of, we wouldn't be here but for that authorization.
Okay. And is it just, just to add, we are in contract with the owner with the authorization, yes?
Pending the zoning, correct?
Obviously, a concern, I taught in this building for many years, and I retired a few years ago, and I used to leave after the buses, in the Washingtonville School District, leaving primarily because it was impossible to get through town. And 78, 48 bus routes leaving the high school is a nightmare. And now I'm looking at 56 plus 78 in two phases. And off of 208, and you're obviously gonna have to go through the Washingtonville Central School District to go wherever you're going, or to get wherever you're gonna get. What's your position on that?
I would just add, we're working on a traffic study.
I'm sorry?
We're working on a traffic study that will address that. So to answer that question about that is a little premature.
It's a little premature, isn't it?
So, part of the process, we have to do a traffic study. That's part of the process. We have to do it, even though, yes, there is traffic in Main Street at the school district. Currently now, my contract, it's 55 buses that we service the Washingtonville School District by themselves. That does private road view, special ed programs. Those buses, those 55 buses, have been servicing your community for the last three years with the traffic that's been there.
So you're saying 55 plus 48 from Washingtonville have been on the roads?
They've been on the road.
I have a question. Okay. So the buses that we house at this proposed location, right, will they be solely produced for the Washingtonville Central School District and Monroe because?
Of course not.
Because I know according to your website, I'm actually a follower of Gavin Dress, just to ask, I know you have Walden, Walk Hill, Heinrich, Wapengers, Hudson Valley. So you're looking at 170, with Washingtonville's mayor, Buggles, that has 72 buses, there are 48 routes. I know you mentioned just now that there are 50 that are on the road, but how many more buses are we looking at running through?
So, the other contracts have bus yards. We're not looking to close the other bus yards and move those buses here. It doesn't make sense to travel from Wapengers to here with drivers' labor cost and fuel. So this bus yard would operate for all the districts and contracts they have in this area, which are Monroe and Washingtonville.
And then I have another question. How, how many routes or how many buses or how often are you running buses on the weekends, on holidays, and in the summer? Because summer comes, I am the most excited woman to be out on the road at 7:00 AM, 2:00 PM, 3:00 PM, because there are no buses, but I'm interested in finding out, you know, what other services we provide from this.
On the weekend, it's very little, but there is some buses for sports activities on Saturday. Usually Sunday, there is nothing. And then on the summertime, we have the summer contracts to provide transportation for the special needs. So there is buses in the summertime. Not as many, but there is.